All right, we call it in, a lot of the meeting, thank you. This is welcome to people in the gallery and those viewing via live stream. On behalf of the Swanham Rural City Council, I acknowledge your traditional custodians on land on which you move, and pay our respects to that always past and present. councillor Moore, read the prayer, thank you.
We beseech you, Lord, that we may be granted wisdom, understanding and sincerity of purpose, in your decisions we are called on to make for the welfare of the people of the rural city of Swan Hill.
Please be seated. Now, all councillors are present, so we have no apologies. Directors at an office are present. We have Bruce Myers, the Director of Community Cultural Services at Sydney Me, as unfortunately our CEO has had, become ill overnight. We also have Barn Pratap, the Director of Corporate Services, Miss Heather Green, Director of Development and Planning, and Peter Ross, our Acting Director of Infrastructure. And also Sharon Lindsay and Natalie Thompson, both EAs, sitting next to me. Right, thank you. Confirmation of minutes of the scheduled meeting that was held on the 21st of February 23.
Oh, moved.
Moved by councillor Jeffrey, second to councillor King, all in favour. Carry it. Do we have any disclosures of conflict of interest? Silence, I'll take that as a none. There's no joint medicine reading of additions. We had no public question time. There's no one here for the open forum. We'll move straight into section B, reports. The first one being 23.12, to freight road network mapping and infrastructure investment study. Over to you, Mr Ross, are you taking this?
I am. Is it normal practice to read it, or?
Oh, just give us a summary of the report.
Key points.
Key points. Okay, we council engaged RMCG to air a report on flight, freight and network mapping and infrastructure for both Swan Hill Council and Gannawarra. Looking at priorities of roads for future development to help support the growing investments that have been made into our farming region. This area is known as the garden, the fruit bowl of Australia, and we do need to understand what our road network needs are. The report is quite extensive. It's only a small report, but it's quite extensive in the research and information that it contains. It has given some priorities for roadworks. It has developed a tool to help determine priorities for other roads. And it has taken into account requests as well as freight loading on roads, requests for NHBR permits, which is the controlling body for oversized and overmass vehicles on our roads, and taken that into account in determining some of our priority roads. They've costed out some of the, or most of the roads that are of importance to Swan Hill and Gannawarra. There is also a investment prospectus, which sort of provides a bit further background into the importance of investing in these roads. There's also discussion on the risk of not investing and what the outcomes could be from that. Obviously, this doesn't come cheaply. It's a fair bit of money that needs to be invested. And council does have restrictions on its budgets, so government grants will be given a good opportunity to apply for, and this document will help support that.
Thanks, Mr Ross. Questions, councillors? No questions? Is that a question, or are you in move motion?
No, happy to, if there's no questions, I'm-
There's no questions, I'll take a motion to councillor King.
Yeah, I'm happy to move, as per the recommendations, plus an extra couple of dot points, which have been provided to Sharon for the benefit of everybody there. So on top of the recommendations that we endorse the report, et cetera, et cetera, that we also write to the federal minister Catherine King, Minister for Infrastructure, Transport Region Development Local Government, outlining the importance of LRCI grants, amongst other grants, with a copy of this report, and also that we invite the Victorian Minister of Transport to visit the region to inspect the key roads identified in this report and other key roads in the Swan Hill and Gannawarra LGA. So rather than just writing to them, actually extend an invitation to come to the region and see what this report's all about.
Thank you. You have a second for that? Councillor Moore, wish to speak to that all, councillor King?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Thanks, Peter, for the report and for coordinating, helping coordinate the contents of this report. I believe it's fantastic that the, and really highlights the importance of roads in this region. The scope of this study and the resulting report was only to determine the strategic linkages for high productivity freight vehicles onto the existing principal freight network of two rail lines and three major highways in the two municipalities. As outlined in detail, the required investment is around $37 million for the two councils, which in, I guess in reality, is not that much money for the amount of improvements that can be made by implementing the recommendations of the report. It's a comprehensive report, provides recommendations that give us a substantial basis for advocacy for road funding in our region. However, I believe it's important to note that the founding data in this report highlights the significant and the absolute underinvestment in regional infrastructure by successive state and federal governments. Let's look at some of the key numbers in this report for the Swanham Rural City Council and the Gannawarra Shire Council. Over 800,000 hectares and 2 million tonnes of agricultural production valued at around $1.6 billion, according to the report, which includes nearly 1 million tonnes of grain. That's 9% of Victoria's agricultural production, just 9% from just Swan Hill and Gannawarra alone. On top of that, nearly a million tonnes of mining and quarrying production. So a total of over 3 million tonnes of primary production freight from the two councils, with more than 70%, or 2.1 million tonnes, being on the road network. Imagine the federal and state government revenue that is generated through direct and indirect taxes on this level of production: company taxes, stamp duties on vehicle purchases and registrations, and fuel excise. Yet the Victorian government can't find $100 million to complete the Murray Basin Rail project, and many of our roads are reminiscent of a third world country. This report is fantastic, and it's a step in the right direction to continue to advocate for a more equitable share of road and rail funding for our region of Victoria. So this is a great place to start, but let's use it as well to highlight the underinvestment in other regional infrastructure as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And councillor Moore?
Thank you, Mayor McPhee, on the same absolute path as councillor King. Thank you, Mr Ross, for this report and others in council who've got it up and running. Advocacy backed by facts and data. And as you always know, I always disagree with the output figures. As we've done with our own output data, that we hopefully will get some new stuff, new data coming to us soon. $1.6 billion quoted in the report is merely Swan Hill's contribution. I'm thinking that it's probably closer to 2.5 to 3 billion, Farmgate, Quarrygate, or whatever. And as you know, I always go along the lines of the multiplier effect. That's not just 2 to 3 billion of output from our two municipality. It multiplies out to somewhere between 6.5 and $10 billion to the economy. If you don't believe in the multiplier effect, I was down at the Sale Yards Stock Exchange, livestock exchange last week, beef selling for the equivalent of $10 a kilo dressed. Now, if you want to go back to a restaurant and buy that beef steak back, a 300 gram steak, it'll cost you about $100 a kilo. So that's the multiplier effect in action. In that case, it's 10 times. But for the average that most economists will use, it's somewhere around four to five times. So this Farmgate price, that's just the start of a value chain that extends to $10 billion. And as councillor King says, if we can't get the taxes back that we rightfully deserve and generate in this municipality, we've generated them year after year, Covid, no Covid, blue green algae or no blue green algae. We have generated this, farmers have generated this from this municipality, year after year, and we have been neglected, as councillor King said, year after year. We can't even get back a few petty millions of dollars out of the 10 billion year that's expended or generated for this, not just for our municipality, but for the state, for the nation, through exports, and we can't get it back. It's about time. I've had it up to here. It's time we got our money back. You know, our roads, not just these roads, but all our local roads, they need upgrading big time. So I'm saying to you councillors, please support this. If the media get this, please, jump on this. We generate a massive amount of income for the state, and as councillor King said in this report, 9%. Well, I think I worked out a couple of years ago that it's actually 7% of Australia's agricultural production comes from this area. 7% of Australia's agricultural production. So we punch way above our weight. There's only 20,400 something, 600 something people in this municipality. There's only 20,000 of us, and we're producing this massive output. So it's time, it's way beyond time we get our taxes that we generate that start here, back here, and keeping us, keeping us doing what we do best. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Use your time well there councillor. Do I have any other speakers for?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I'd like to say that this report is absolutely fantastic. It's extremely accurate, and I really found a lot to admire in the roads that are identified, and it really rang true for me from what I know about the area. And to explain it to the people, it's about linking those bigger roads with the other bigger roads so that those really big trucks can get from one big road to another without endangering their lives and the lives of the people who live there. We need to be moving our produce in big trucks. That's the way it does with, you know, B-doubles and all the rest of it. And yes, the roads they've identified, I absolutely think I agree with the categories they put them in and as important. And they're not in some of the more remote areas of our municipality, but where there's huge production. And if you're in a car driving towards a trough on one of those roads, you'd really wish that it was safer and wider. And so there's two parts to this advocacy, and it's really important that we push it forward, but it's great to have a really fantastic piece of research here to back it up.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Yes, I just wanted to comment on the extent, how big the report is and how well done it is by our CMG. I think they've done a great job of going out and getting appropriate data, and then doing the right consultation and coordinating it all together so that it makes a really good picture for us to present.
Thank you. Yeah, councillor Kelly?
I would like to support the motion. Thank councillor King for adding those extra two lines because Catherine King is from Ballarat, she's Victorian, and she's also the Minister for Local Government, so, and Regional Development. So to have her here would be fantastic, and it's possible because, yeah, it's not far from where she lives. So if we could get her here, we really should try to. So great report. And we do know that roads are so important to us, and it's great to have councillor Moore, the numbers man. We can always rely on him to have worked the numbers there. And we should, we should be talking up our stats. And thank you to him for figuring those out, because I wouldn't have been able to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kelly. Any other speakers? No one's supported this motion. I put the motion all in favour.
Close, can we close?
Carry on, there's only closing, unfortunately, there's so much going to get some motion.
Is that all?
Can't, can't.
Just one thing I'd like to raise with the inviting the minister, I certainly hope he drives and doesn't fly, so he does see the conditions he poses, as it comes up. All right, our second report is the community engagement, art extension and renovation, cultural visitor and cultural.
I'd like to move an amendment to this, just shadowing.
We'll get the report first.
Oh, no, I don't. That's the wrong one. Excuse me.
Miss Green?
Thanks, Mr Mayor. This is an exciting time in the two major projects for council for the last couple of years, and that is the extension to the art gallery, or extension and renovation to the art gallery, and the development of a new visitor and cultural hub at the Pioneer Settlement, which will serve as a visitor information centre, entry to the settlement, and some Aboriginal cultural place, hopefully tying in with some Aboriginal cultural activity on Pentele Island, which is another piece of work being carried out that will be talked to the community, will be engaged in the near future on that project as well. As council recalls, last year council resolved to proceed with the development of two projects, splitting the old Outplace building into two post the registration of the Pioneer Settlement on the Heritage Register. Council also rightly said we need to do some significant community engagement along the way to ensure that the community had the opportunity to have their say and would feed into the design and development of those two buildings. So that has occurred over the last couple of months. There's been options on council's Let's Talk platform on our website, and through six sessions held with an independent facilitator, three for each building, which resulted in these two documents. And I apologize, these weren't attached to the report, but councillors did receive electronic copies of these a week and a half ago, as did all the participants that have provided their email addresses through both the forums and on the Let's Talk platform. They have received a copy of that as well, and it is on our Let's Talk platform now for the broader community to have a look at those. So what we're proposing now is, this Thursday of this week, we'll be holding four sessions open to anyone in the community to attend, to review these documents, add anything that they think is missing, or if people have thought of additional items that they want to add. These documents also answer some of the questions that were raised by community members, and the mayor will be there to go through a couple of those key issues as well. So that's happening this Thursday at the Art Gallery, two sessions in the morning, one for the Art Gallery, one for the other building, and then two sessions in the early evening. So we hope that members of the community will come to that. The other good news is we have appointed architects for both projects, two separate architects, one for the Art Gallery and one for the other building. I think both of them are going to be in attendance for those sessions on Thursday. Certainly the Art Gallery one is. Actually, I lied, both of them are in attendance. So that will be great. I can report that the Art Gallery architect is Brandrick's Architect, out of Patuka, Moamah. And the other building, the Tourism and Cultural Hub, is Common Architects out of Melbourne, who have got a significant heritage background, and they've got an architect who is key personally, Aisling Heritage Victoria. So that's the second stage of community engagement. The third stage, as mentioned in this report, will involve the architects. So the community this Thursday will be able to meet the architects, but there will be sessions once the architects have done, commenced to do some work with the broader community. As also mentioned in this report, some of the discreet sectors of the community, including the Aboriginal community, friends of the Pioneer Settlement, the Art Gallery Advisory Group, and other user groups will also get the opportunity to meet with the architects as well. I think community engagement's a really important part of any project, and I think we've done a much better job than we have in the past on this project to engage the community, and the sessions were well attended. In this report, I think I've mentioned the number of people who participated. I can't find that off the top of my head now, but fairly good participation from the broader community. And I've recommended that council note this update and the progression of these two projects, and also that council encourage the community to continue to be involved in the development of the Art Gallery and the Tourism and Cultural Hub.
Any other speaker? Questions, councillors? Question?
Yes.
Councillor Kelly?
Thank you for that report. It's pretty exciting to have architects engaged now, appointed, and yeah, I better ask a question. Yeah, the, it is extensive consultation, and it's amazing what's come out of the community. Councillors can attend these upcoming ones?
Absolutely.
Yep. And are they going to be giving a summary of these documents somehow? And then having comment on the summary, or what's the process?
The mayor will give some introduction. These will be available as posters on the walls to allow people to go around and literally almost scribble on them, or put stickers to add anything. We will have two staff, and at least the mayor, plus hopefully some other councillors at each session, there to answer questions or help in any way. So that's the opportunity. And there'll be through our Let's Talk platform, an opportunity to put in writing any further thoughts people have had or additional questions.
And the architects are going to be there?
The architects will be there to listen primarily, because they have received copies of this that literally aren't adjusted.
And someone did say that these documents have been sent to the people who attended those sessions, and do you want them to come back to, to respeak to their ideas, or?
Only if they want to. No, if they see something additional, or they want to hear what other people might say or discuss. So we haven't asked people to RSVP, people can just turn up.
Yep. And I'm keen to know timelines. Do you have any idea of all the completion of the consultation? The first time we see a plan?
We will come back to you with that. So we will be getting, the architects have to prepare two concepts. We suspect the cultural and tourism hub is likely to be one with some modifications because Heritage Victoria, we're really not going to have the time or the dollars to go with two completely different options, and they're going to be pretty strict on what the design is like. So it might be things like some of the materials or colours, or internal layout might be slightly different on two options. But the Art Gallery could be quite different, two options, and that's the time where, so the architects will take all this information, plus what we've already provided in terms of floor spaces and that sort of thing, and weave their magic, as only architects can, and then come back to the community and say, what do you think?
Yep.
Basically. So we're hoping that's within a couple of months.
And the Bandbricks are the same ones who did the Outplace?
Yes.
So they're coming in with?
To do the Art Gallery.
Yep, with all their knowledge already, ready to go.
Yep.
And my last question was, on top of page 11, there is a paragraph there, comment from somebody, and I just want it noted, or we shouldn't be including comments that are, I think, abusive and derogatory towards people. I really feel like, fair enough that that person said that, or even wrote it down, but we don't have to print it in our agenda.
That's one of these, councillor Kelly, one of these documents?
Yeah, it's in the Tourism and Cultural Hub report. I don't think that's within our, we're not promoting community harmony by printing things like that. And this project is going to hopefully bring people together, resolve and bring healing, and be great projects, and I think that's going to perpetuate stuff in the past.
I understand why you can't, councillor Kelly, in relation to it, but if you're through this whole project, we want to be open and transparent with all people. It hasn't named anyone in particular, there's no names, there's no defamation anyone in particular. And if people take away, if we start taking certain things out, then you lose the trust of the community. So, well, you're taking it out, what else have you taken out? So this process is about including everyone, being inclusive, good, bad, or ugly, unfortunately. And unfortunately, you'll never, being a leader in the community, you're never going to please everyone. So you've got to accept that there's going to be situations where people are against the projects, and we still have to listen to what they have to say, irrespective of what side of the fence they're on. So.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying we don't listen, but I don't think we have to print it, reprint it.
Yeah, but then that leaves open that we face up. Anyway, question? We're councillor Moore.
Was there anything that came out of this round of consultation compared to the last round of consultation? Was there anything that wasn't brought up in the first round of consultation?
I think it got into a little bit more detail, so things about materials and things for both buildings. And because they're separate buildings, some of that's a bit different. A lot of similar issues, but, you know, they're more specific. For instance, within the Pioneer Settlement, very clear direction that they want the building to fit in and use traditional materials. That's probably quite, almost, almost immanent.
That was the same as before, wasn't it?
Well, no, before we probably had a mix of being obviously new and use whatever materials, so. But, yeah, I think there was probably not a lot new, but there's a greater level of detail.
Second question. Are we going to be guided by people who, the design of this? What are their tourism expertise? How much have we listened to people who have got an eye on future tourism and future tourists, rather than looking back in rear vision mirror? We actually, we're just going to take those groups' rough average and then go with that, or?
Councillor Moore, I think that's a question for the councillors around this room when the ultimate decision's made. It won't likely be put onto each particular thing. The architect will take on line everyone. I don't think it's an appropriate question for Miss Green this time, councillor Moore. I think it's an appropriate question for Miss Green this time, councillor Moore, with due respect.
Well, I'm happy just to answer that both architects have got experience in either in the Art Galleries or similar sorts of projects for Brandrick's. And the other architects in these sort of, is it a tourism-related buildings?
Any other questions at all, councillors? Councillor Kelly?
I did, I did hear that Brandrick's have on board someone, is it James?
James, someone, yes, they have. The expert in art galleries, yeah.
Yeah, so that's pretty exciting.
We did use him last time, and Ian Tully rates him very highly. So he's a subconsultant to Brandrick's.
Yeah, Mr. Moyers knows the person.
Rodney James. So, yeah, it was discussed at the Art Gallery Advisory Committee last night. So Rodney James is an expert in designing, assessing designs, all different features that are unique to art galleries. And he was heavily involved with the Art Gallery compartment of the previous project. And he'll be assisting Brandrick's with this, which is great.
And secondly, I love the fact that the children were asked, how did that happen? The input from primary school children.
That's part of our engagement policies. We try to engage particularly with young people.
We could just go with their ideas.
We'll have them adopted.
Yeah, but maybe they just want food. Yeah, so it was, it was really good, some of their comments, yeah. Well, all their comments were great. Some of them were.
Gold. Lots of flowers.
Yeah. All right. No further questions, councillors? I'll ask for a motion. Councillor King?
I've got to go to it. I move the motion, as recommended, that we note the update on the community engagement associated with the development of the Art Gallery and Tourism and Cultural Hub, and encourage the community very strongly to continue to get involved in the development of the Art Gallery and Hub.
You want, was that a third dot point you're putting in there?
No, I just went with it.
Oh, all right, okay. Move the motion. You need to talk to her in a minute. Okay, seconded, councillor Young, thank you. Speak to her now, councillor King.
Great. These, these two buildings and in fact facilities will be a fantastic addition to our cultural and community life in the Swan Hill region. And I think it's wonderful that we're taking note of the, getting the community involved from the outset. And thank you all the council officers for facilitating that. And thank you very much to the, to the community for attending all the engagement sessions. And keep on doing it. We're listening carefully. Thank you.
I just endorse what councillor McKay said, and I just think it's really exciting now that we move into the next stage and we get this thing going.
Any other speakers?
I'd just like to thank those members of the community that have come along to the sessions and given a valuable input. And it's pleasing that they are giving some good results. I'm looking forward to more of the community having a say.
Thank you. Now, other speakers?
I just wanted to say that I think it's great that we were able to retain that funding. And thanks to all the, all the leadership at the council for letting, ensuring that that happened. And it's, it is an exciting time.
Thank you. All right, no other speakers? No speakers against the motion? Or put the motion on in favour? Carry it. As councillor McKay said, encourage everyone to come along to those sessions first, first maybe have something else to add. All right. Next report, B23.14, Swan Hill Integrated Transport and Land Use Strategy. Miss Green?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As this report says, it seeks to inform and entertain the direction from council on the proposed Swan Hill Integrated Transport Land Use Strategy for 2050, or leading up to 2050. As council is aware, it has been doing some work on some preliminary planning for us to get to 2050 in terms of primarily land use, but also integrated transport. And fortuitously, the new Department of Transport and Planning has met with officers over the last number of weeks to discuss an opportunity, a financial opportunity to work with that department to prepare a, what is called, an integrated transport and land use strategy. We think the timing is perfect. Council is also due to review its planning scheme, so this will aid in that. And it will, this sort of strategy is about linking our transport needs with our land use needs. So if we're creating new industrial areas, we make sure they're accessible by the appropriate road access. If we're creating residential areas, that again, the accessibility for pedestrians, people on bikes, as well as vehicles is adequately planned for. So as this report says, the strategy will also help inform the Murray River Bridge pedestrian connectivity, activation of the former Gobber Murray Water Number Nine Channel, and freight movements throughout the city. What is required from council is some financial contribution to the Department of Transport's contribution of $50,000. And we're recommending that council fund $100,000 into that project through two, two contributions, one from an existing, existing funding in our 10-year plan for pedestrian and cycling planning, which council has in for next year, as well as $60,000 from the anticipated 2023 surplus, to enable that funding to match the Department of Transport's funding of $50,000 and enable that project to commence pretty much immediately. So that is the recommendation of this report.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Questions? Councillor King?
Yeah, just a question on the timeframe for applying for the Department of Transport funding. Is this, is this something that's urgent, that needs to be acted on quickly? I just, I guess I'm, with regards to allocating money out of our anticipated surplus, just wondering whether there's an urgency around this that we need to consider that right now, that's all.
There is. The department wants basically to have that money spent, their money spent before the 30th of June. So we need to commence the work well before the 30th of June, so that we can, yeah, save the money.
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Any other questions, councillors?
Yeah, just following on from that, but will this be enough money? Will we need money in further budgets, additional money in further budgets to complete this, or is this going to be enough?
This is enough for this project. Now, this is only for Swan Hill town. So should we need to do other work in the other, the balance of the municipality? Yeah, that would be a separate project.
I have a question. The money from the anticipated surplus, when is the report, this won't be one with Mr. Patrath. When is the report coming to council about the surplus? And it's $60,000 in that? Is that in the surplus? We obviously got more money than that?
At the moment, it's the anticipated surplus, Miss Mayor. The final figures will be known after the accounts are reported, somewhere around September or October.
Yeah, so it'll be in excess of that amount, and we'll have a report come to, what we do with the rest of that money?
That's correct.
Thank you.
We are about to ring in a report for the surplus from last financial year, ended on 30th of June 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Patrath. Councillor Kelly?
I had a question. Is it correct, Ms. Green, that, that we don't currently have one of these strategies in play?
That's correct.
And how does it work in with the planning, land use planning work that we're doing current, already?
So it'll work nicely there, again, just for major. So councillors, recall, we talked about having a road that bypasses Swan Hill. So it'll make sure that if that's the proposal, then that will work. And where should that be, and how will it work, and how will that integrate with the proposed land uses? I think in here, we've given you a copy of the Wabba Wabba Transport Plan to give you an idea of the sort. I mean, Wabba's much bigger than Swan Hill, but it will give you an idea of the sorts of planning that needs to be undertaken.
I'm happy to move the motion.
All right. Is there no further quick question, councillor King?
No, I'll second it.
All right. So councillor Kelly is running the motion as per the recommendation?
Yes.
And seconded, councillor King. Wish to speak to that councillor Kelly?
Yes, please. Just to say that I think it's great that we're on the front foot, hopefully. We do need these extensive reports and strategies, and we do need to outsource to do them. So allocating this money hopefully will allow us to plan wisely, do it strategically, and allow councillors to have the information they need to make good decisions for the community. So I'm glad that the report has been done and that we can, or that we're going to do it. And look forward to seeing it when it's, when it's done.
Thank you, councillor Kelly. Councillor King?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Support councillor Kelly's motion. And just to say that, you know, it's not often that we get money out of governments for strategic work. So this is a great opportunity to actually capture the $50,000 that's on offer for strategic work. Typically, that sort of stuff's not funded by governments. An integrated transport and land use strategy, 2050, is critical to the future planning of Swan Hill, and it can direct the strategic positioning of transport routes and land use precincts to support our future growth. The inclusion of the former GMW Number Nine Channel system as part of a pedestrian and cycling functional and recreational linkage, possibly including some strategic drainage retention, which is also being worked on at the moment, is a real winner, and it offers great opportunity for Swan Hill. I believe it's important that we properly plan for the future, future strategic road and rail transport links, future industrial and commercial precincts, future opportunities for development of the aerodrome for freight and passenger connection, just to name a few. So that we can create the best possible outcomes for future generations of Swan Hillians. So this is a step in the right direction. I overwhelmingly support it.
Any other speakers? Councillor Moore?
Yes, thanks, Mayor McCreary. Well, support and endorse this previous statement. As outlined in the previous item, B2312, the Freight Road Network Mapping and Infrastructure Investment Report, Swan Hill is a regional town that supports a massive amount of agricultural output and manufacturing, which is not mentioned in the report as much, I don't think. This, this development of this project will, we hope, will serve as, will set Swan Hill up to be a true regional centre. And bear in mind, we don't just service Victoria, we service a large area of New South Wales as well. Hopefully, we'll end up with a report that sets us up as a modern, highly livable city with a growth perspective. And these, we've got to be looking to the future, and when Swan Hill is 15,000 or 20,000 people, and only with these sort of studies do we set ourselves up for that. We service a big area, and as we know, there's, there's big developments in the downstream processing, almond processing, pistachio processing, sand mining. Hundreds and hundreds of jobs will be based here and to service areas of New South Wales and our municipality and adjacent municipalities. This report sets us up for that. We need it to set ourselves up as a, for the long term. And as I said, a highly livable city with a growth perspective.
Thank you, councillor Moore. Any other speakers? Councillor Kelly?
I would just say very briefly that we're in a lucky position of doing this sort of planning while the city is still small. So we can visualize and create the city of the future, which hopefully will be different to other towns and other cities sprawling areas of suburbia, and we'll have a fantastic place that's got some architectural and landscaping fur. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? No other speakers? No one speaks against it? Don't get in the way of the honour. Sorry. On in favour? Carry it. It's a right of reply, councillors, if no one speaks against the motion.
Oh, maybe we should.
Appointment of council delegates to outside organisations. Mr. Moyers, you're taking this one on.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess as councillors would be acutely aware, you will variously attend a number of organizations and community groups, something is about 35 in the list. Normally, at the end of the calendar year, following the statutory meeting and mayoral election, councillors will decide on which groups they attend during the next 12-month period. Following the joining of councillor Kelly to the group, this report has been brought back to enable council to begin review. So I think it's completely appropriate for me to hand back to you, Mayor, to discuss that. And we will capture the changes, if any, to the lists.
I'd like to move with amendment.
Yeah, what we're doing, councillor Kelly, we're not actually a measure, because what we're going to do, there's been some agreement at this stage in point in time, there's some agreements between the councillors. But you will be able to, for the Swan Hill Leisure Centre, you'll be the councillor on that. The Community Development Fund, you will be on that, and councillor Moore will be taking off it. The Women Progress Association will go to councillor King and you take away from you. The Meninga Technique Improvement Group, councillor Moore's not in a position to do that on those days. If you can't do it, I'll take that on myself, if you're.
I don't know the days.
Usually on a Wednesday.
We organize that anyway. It needs to be amended, we can amend that.
I'll keep it then.
All right, you'll keep that one? Yeah, keeping women, yep.
No, not keeping women.
No, not women, no, that's, councillor King go to that. Councillor King, or councillor Kelly's keeping Meninga Technique.
Yes.
And councillor Kelly, a subdelegate for the local Aboriginal network. We haven't got one of them, have we? Councillor Kay was there.
No, councillor King is the delegate.
Yep. You have councillor Kay, McKay is currently the subdelegate.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I missed that. Leave that.
Leave that, all right. Okay, leave that as it, as it's. And the last one was, and councillor Kelly, friends of the Pioneer Settlements. We actually haven't got them on the list at this stage, councillor Kelly.
So I'd like to amend it that we, that we added.
What, probably the best course of action at this point in time is some of these groups, we've got to be careful with through this process, we need to revise all the groups. Some of these other groups have raised as well. And I'll get the CEO to bring a report to a future assembly and review this list. As some of those may not be relevant anymore into the future, and there may be some new groups that need to come onto the list. So we'll amend the list as best, I think there's appropriate course for that.
Thank you. That's great. I didn't have to move an amendment.
No, that's all right.
I did all that work.
So with those, if everyone's happy with those things, the, now we know that, you can move the motion as per the recommendation.
I'll move it, yeah.
Thanks, councillor Kelly. You moved that motion. Do I have a second? Councillor Jeffrey, thank you. Wish to speak to that councillor Kelly?
Ah, yes, please. I think that these groups are really important. The delegation and appointment to the delegated groups, in line with our council plan, partnerships and engagement, and our pillars of livability, prosperity, harmony, and leadership. Particularly leadership with 4.2 under leadership being transparent communication and engagement. And under that, 4.2.1, authentic and effective engagement with our community. 4.2.2, visible presence in our community. And then 4.3 is bold leadership, strong partnerships, and effective advocacy. And 4.3.1, create meaningful partnerships across our community. 4.3.3, working together in promotion of our municipality. So all, all these groups, whether it's the transport groups, the Aboriginal liaison groups, the community advancement groups, they're all just integral to having, having a good community, having councillors knowing what's going on, leadership and, and taking some, all taking a role in leadership, not just the mayor, but deputy mayor and all the councillors. So I'm glad that we've resolved, now that I'm on board, that who's doing what. And I look forward to us all having a good year of getting out into these groups. And important things such as the Central Victorian Greenhouse Alliance, the Bridge Group. Yeah, all really important projects and things that we're working on. So, yeah.
Thanks, councillor Kelly.
Good luck to everybody.
Councillor Jeffrey?
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Any other speakers? No other speakers? The motion on in favour? Carry it. You have just like to confirm, confirm with councillor Kelly, they are important groups. And as councillors, we can attend any of these meetings, we're well aware of that at any time. And if a councillor is unable to attend, by all means, get in touch with another councillor, they can maybe attend on your behalf.
Can I just ask a question? All these meetings, do they actually go into our calendars? You know, so we're quite free.
They should be in the community calendar.
I don't think they're all in there at the moment.
Well, we'll rectify that. With the times and dates and. Well, we'll rectify that. With the times and dates, it may be in the community calendar.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep.
We'll bring that to an assembly soon, yeah?
Yep.
I just had a question to Ms. Green. With FOPS, is it, there's, I don't know the word, but under councils' authority that you have committees that are actually, is it a?
They are there. I'm just having this checked, but they are their own incorporated body. So they're not all specified by council.
The fact that we haven't included that, I think that's a conversation when we bring the report back to an assembly, other groups, we'll discuss it then as to.
The structure, yeah.
All right?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you councillors. All right, next report. 23.15, the Australian Local Government Association Conference. Mr. Myers?
Thank you, Mayor. Obviously, in June, the ALGA National Assembly takes place in Canberra and council has a policy that requires a report like this to be presented to formally endorse councillors and any senior staff attending the conference at that time. So this report is recommending that councils send the mayor or delegate, deputy mayor councillor Stuart King or delegate and the CEO, Mr. Scott Barbour, as his delegation for the 13th to the 16th of June. For a finish, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to suggest that in recommendation one, we haven't actually stipulated what the travel is to. So we just add after the word Barbour, Sharon, we just put into the 2023 National General Assembly. Just so it becomes a bit more of a standalone thing if we're called on in the future. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Questions, councillors? Councillor Kelly?
I'd just like to move.
Questions at the moment?
I don't have a question.
Got a quick question?
Yep.
Is there a reason why would I have all delegate after the CEO in case of you would have said that I would attend the director going, suppose?
There is all delegate.
Although the mayor and the deputy, not the CEO.
I would suggest that the three mayors, that the title Chief Executive Officer covers. As directors, all directors can be able to do that. But if councillors wish, they can amend that one there to say that Chief Executive Officer will stop. It's completely up to you.
Any other questions?
Look, I did have a question. Sometimes, yeah. The, in the past, I, there were things on that CEOs can go to. So do CEOs go to this one? So it's much more councillors than CEOs.
I've known of councillors where they've, all councillors have gone, no CEO. But a lot of CEOs do attend this function.
Yep. So it's targeted at CEOs?
No, it's local government, targeted at local government. It's all over government across Australia. There's just over 500 in Australia that had the opportunity to go to this. And I'm sure not all, all 500 plus go to it, but a large majority of them do go to this function. Look, for the sake of the chamber, I know it's saying the mayor should go. The deputy mayor has put his hand up to go. I'm encouraging every councillor should get to this at some stage. But I'm also of the opinion that we shouldn't be sending too many councillors. That's my point. So look, I'm happy and I know the Murray River Group of Councillors will be coming up earlier in May sometime as well, which the mayor will be going to represent us in that. So I'm happy if another councillor wished to take that position because I'm sure that deputy mayor was more than capable to represent us as the officiating member of this Elga Conference.
I would be interested to go, but I would be happy to go as someone who pays their own way because I have an uncle there and I could stay with him.
All right.
So I would like permission to go. How much does the actual conference cost? Is it a thousand or?
I don't know. I think it's a thousand fifteen hundred dollars, something like that. It's about a thousand fifteen hundred dollars a conference itself. Councillors, I'm looking for a motion, as I said, like, you know, well, put it this way, it's amongst ourselves. The ones that haven't been, I know there's a number of been, councillor Moore's been as the mayor, councillor Young's been as the mayor, councillor McKay, you've been, haven't you? Councillor Jeffrey, you've given the opportunity. Would you be interested in going?
Not this year.
Not this year. Well, we've got two that would like to go, so I think it's just a matter of if we accept the motion for them, we pay for the two. I'm happy to pay for two. So if that's the case, because all we get, yeah.
I'm happy to move the motion if it's not deemed a conflict, Mr. Mayor, given that I'm one of the delegates.
I don't believe it's a conflict in this case, no.
At the moment, we've got, you're not going.
No.
Stewie's going.
Yep.
Jackie's going. And that's it?
Happy to move as per the recommendation. And then if the mayor chooses not to go, the motion covers that. It's the mayor or delegate. Likewise, if something comes up to me at the last minute, it covers that it's me or the delegate.
Can I just suggest that you put in councillor?
And then if there's any additional ones, so we're basically supporting two delegates and the CEO. If anybody additional wants to go, then it's par your own way unless you're taking the place of the current endorsed delegate, if that makes sense.
Can I just suggest that you put in subject number three, authorised councillor King, because you've got to actually nominate who the voting member is. So.
I think just to cover it, why don't you just leave it as councillor McPhee or delegate? Because then if you choose not to.
I think you've got to name the person. I think that's a trouble, I think. I know in my bill you do, you have to name the person.
Yeah, but I'm just saying if.
But you can't say all delegate.
So are you saying now you're definitely not going?
I won't be, no, I won't be going.
Okay. So then we need to change number one as well.
That's what I'm saying. Look, the fact that I'm going up there already and the fact I've been there, I think it's an opportunity to go over councillors. If councillor Jeffrey wanted to go, it would be a toss-up to who went. But I think we should send two and, yeah, because I'm going prior to that in May. So I think it's a great opportunity for sent councillors, but I'm always in favour of sending two. So, yeah, I want to amend the motion.
So authorised the travel of deputy mayor.
Deputy mayor.
And councillor Kelly? Yep.
Or delegate, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's not going on your life, is it?
Yep. All right. And number three, put in councillor King down there. All right, can I have a move of that? Councillor Jeffrey, thank you. Second of councillor Young. Councillor Jeffrey?
Thank you. Certainly one of the few events that we go through nationwide, almost statewide. And it has been beneficial with councillors representing two ministers in the past over some key issues of the past. Right, grants and, you know, grants are more of a position as well as some visas and further other topics that don't speak to mind. So I happen to send a delegation of two councillors instead of a council.
Thank you. Councillor Young?
All right, it's fine. I'm going with what was just said.
Any other speakers? No other speaker? Put the motion, all in favour? Carrie, it definitely is a worthwhile figure, so definitely encourage councillor Jeffrey to try and make time next year to get there. It's very beneficial to all councillors to attend this at some stage. That's why I'm happy to send two that haven't been. All right, we're moving on to section C, signed seal report. Mr. Myers?
So councillors, thank you, Mayor. Councillors, you can see there's a couple of items that have been signed and sealed under delegation. Your information.
The motion, councillors?
Yep.
Councillor McKay, second of councillor King. Wish to speak to that councillor McKay?
Oh, yes. Only briefly to say, anyone can see, there's a transfer of variation of the spoons lease and we don't all welcome the reopening of spoons.
Yep.
Well done, councillor.
So you do nothing to add?
No. No other speakers? Put the motion all in favour? Carrie. We've got councillor reports, or councillor agenda items, record of attendance in the agenda items. Mr. Myers, yeah, this is just a record of our attending committees. If there's no questions at all or no amendments, can I have a motion?
I've got a couple of minor ones through.
Yep.
The councillor sent on the 7th of March has got Mustafa and a councillor lying attending and everything. So this is the policy in my mind. And there's a time, I don't remember where that was.
Now, those amendments have been called.
I am up to three last night.
Again, no other amendments? A motion? Yeah, councillor Jeffrey, seconded? Thank you councillor Kelly. Wish to speak to that all, councillor Jeffrey?
Proceed.
Now, proceed. I'll put the motion all in favour? Carrie. Next one. All right, there's no notice of motion. We have no foreshadowed items. Urgent items not included in the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to bring an urgent item if I could, please.
What is that urgent item in relation to, Mr. King?
I'd like to move that it's in relation.
Move, we just, what's the urgent item is then we've got to.
It's in relation to the current situation in the Karang Lake system with regards to massive fish deaths in the Karang Lake system, which also impacts our municipality. I understand obviously that not all of the Karang lakes are in our municipality and what I'm specifically referring to is Kangaroo Lake. But it impacts our municipality significantly as well.
Are we going to accept that as late autumn? Do you accept that as late autumn?
I think it depends what, what is it? Do you want to?
Well, you'd be looking at writing to the minister and saying, yeah. I think the motion is going to be councillor King. We've got to accept it as a.
You've got to accept it first.
Yeah, you've got to accept it first. But it's, what is the motion going to be so for councillor?
So I'm going to move the council right to the local member Peter Walsh and the relevant state and federal environment and water ministers in relation to the management of water in this region of the Murray Darling Basin, in this region of the Murray Darling Basin post the 2022 floods, specifically highlighting the current fish deaths in the Karang Lakes system.
So you're accepting that as late autumn?
I accept.
All right. Moves councillor Kelly, second of councillor?
No, you're moving to accept it.
We've got to move to, I mean.
Because it's urgent.
We're moving to accept it. Moved by councillor Kelly, second by councillor McKay, all in favour? Carrie, Ryan, councillor King?
Thank you. I'll just, I'll re-say that and I'll pass it on to Sharon so she can put it up on the board. So I move the council right to the local, our local member Peter Walsh. And you can put the relevant MLAs after that, et cetera. And the relevant state and federal environment and water ministers in relation to the mismanagement of water in this region of the Murray Darling Basin post the 2022 floods, specifically highlighting the current fish deaths in the Karang Lakes system.
Do I have a second for that? Councillor McKay? All right. Did you wish to speak to that?
Yes, just briefly, Mr. Mayor, it's come up at the last minute, so I haven't got a large spiel. But needless to say, four months ago, we had water lapping at the banks of our side of the river. And on the other side of the river, it was effectively an inland sea. Now, you could just about walk across the Murray River and we are inundated by black water and blue-green algae in both our surrounding lakes and the Murray and Little Murray rivers and other rivers. On the weekend just passed, I witnessed what I estimated as tens of thousands of dead fish on the northern banks of Kangaroo Lake. Today, I'm informed that excavators and trucks are collecting tonnes of dead fish, some of them up to 1.4 metres long from Kangaroo Lake. In our municipality, Lake Boga has also been affected with significant fish deaths. This is nothing less than gross water mismanagement and the people of our region deserve an explanation from the relevant government ministers. If this is the result of the implementation of the Murray Darling Basin Plan, then clearly the plan is a massive failure. There are significant impacts on farming, significant impacts on fishing, on recreation and other tourism in this region and somebody needs to be held accountable. Thank you.
Thank you councillor King. Councillor McKay?
Yes, I'm very happy. So thank you councillor King. That's a wonderful motion to make and I 100% support it. We have been in this region, gone from the horrors of black water throughout the entire system after the flood. And now, exactly as councillor King says, there's been algae in most of the waterways. So we've gone from bad to worse. And it should never have been that way. It, I would have proposed that it would have been better to have the good flows that came from the dams with better water, not drop the river so quickly and allow some fresh water to improve the habitat for fish and humans. I swam out at Lake Kangaroo sort of reluctantly because the water was quite green, but I do get around. And I'm not at all surprised that this happened, although I have never seen it really happen to this extent. And I'm horrified. It's distressing. And I think we definitely should write to the water ministers. Can I at this point add an amendment as well?
No, you can't.
Sorry, that's all right. We'll do it for a future meeting.
All right. Okay. Do I have any other speakers?
You may.
Councillor Moore?
Thank you, Mayor McPhee. Well, it appears councillors that fish kills have become endemic. Fish kills have become endemic throughout not just the region, but the Australia. We've just heard about the Menindi Lakes fish kill, massive, massive fish kill. If you've seen the footage of that, you know, Lake Charm, Kangaroo Lake, that's a walk in the park. It's nothing. The massive fish kills are up there. This is the third fish kill. The first fish kill was in the Murray here just a few months back. The fish are still stranded, hanging on the fences of the farm, which our place went underwater. The fish are still hanging there. They're still on the roadsides. There's hundreds of them. Again, old cod, yellow valley, that take years to grow. They're still there. I don't know how long we can, you know, we've had this Murray Darling Basin plan to buy back all this water, to have all this wonderful, to fulfil all this wonderful environmental theory. I call it theory because it's turned out to be just that. It was a theory. It's not working. How many more fish kills have we got to have to wake up? Buying back more water ain't going to work. And it hasn't worked. Now, I have a bit of a suspicion that European carp have a lot to do with this. The more European carp we get, and we've just seen there's a massive explosion. I bet you there's no dead carp amongst them. They'll be all still down there. They're fouling up the water. Every time I go to the river, there's carp along the riverside, the riverbank, sucking away at the bank, making it muddy, eating every bit of natural vegetation. There's no more natural green along the riverbanks anymore, except a little bit of cane grass. Carp, I think, are the root of the problem. I'm not 100% sure. I'm not a scientist, but it seems to me the higher the carp numbers go, higher the fish kills go and the more devastating they are. Food for thought. Massive, I think we need some advocacy on getting that carp virus at least. It's been kicked down the road for, oh no, decades. They've known they've got it, oh, we're going to do more experiments. Well, the other side of that release is fish kill after fish kill after fish kill. And we're not talking about reparation within a couple of years. As councillor King said, these cogs, cod, are decades old. They're massive. They don't grow to 1.4 metres in a couple of years. They're as old as we are. So I endorse everything councillor King says. Accepting fish kills as natural events, that's just absolute poppycock. Thank you, McPhee.
I think I've got to know all the talk. Take a breath.
I'd like to move an amendment if I could.
We've always had the debate in relation to the motions.
It's just to add some people to write to. So it's nothing to change the motion. Would that be acceptable, councillor King? The MDBA and the Commonwealth Environment and Water Holder.
I'm happy to accept those as additions.
It's not to change the.
For efficiency, Mr. Mayor, happy to accept that we're widening the net, so to speak.
Yep.
Pardon the pun.
I budget on fish. Calm down there, councillor Moore. Just take a breath there. Do I have any other speakers? Yeah, councillor Kelly?
It is timely that we bring this urgent motion up and it's alarming. It's all over Facebook. It's all over Twitter. It gives us, it gives our region exposure we don't really want. We don't want exposure for these types of terrible things. And it has an effect on our community at a very deep psychological and emotional level. Nobody likes to see this. It's just tragic. It's so bad for our community in regards to Easter coming up. Usually that's a boom for our economy, everyone goes out and has recreation, everyone. We get so many tourists to our region. So that means a lot of the numbers are going to be down for our businesses, fishing. And it's also very bad for our health. When I heard that the Loddin River had a blue-green algae outbreak a few weeks ago, you know, that water comes here. So obviously it's travelled through. We've had some very high March temperatures and. We've had some very high March temperatures and, and a, a terrible coming together of conditions that have caused these things. I mean, we, it, it hasn't even been reported yet why these things have happened. But terrible, terrible mismanagement of our water system. And whether we blame the Murray Darling Basin Plan or the water managers, it's very hard to figure out whose fault it is. But certainly we have a very sick river system. And as people who live along the river and farm along the river, we have to work these things out because blue green algae is not just going to kill fish, but it's also going to be very bad for our stock, very bad for our water authorities who are going to have to clean the water. And it's going to put our water prices up and it's going to affect our health. It's linked to terrible diseases like, like.
Motor neuron.
Motor neuron disease, which is a terrible disease. So I'm not sure what writing to these people will do. But certainly, put it out there to all our community that we've got to get together and sort these things out because it's just so damaging to, to, I mean, I'm sure a lot, like a lot of people just feel like crying when you see those images.
Thanks, councillor Kelly. Any other speakers? Councillor Young?
Yes, I was just going to suggest that maybe it's time it was looked at in great detail about. Like we did have a proposal once that we have a low level weir at the other side of Swan Hill weir. And it seems ironic that we've had all this water going, flow past us, go out to sea in South Australia, where I think at some point in time, there needs to be something done to keep that water here and keep the water level of the river up. And I think it's an issue that needs to be totally read in depth.
Thank you, councillor Young. Any other speakers? Put the motion on my favour. Carry. Thank you councillor King for bringing that to our attention. Councillor Reports. Councillor King, would you like to start off?
Uh, my reports have been submitted. Nothing significant to, to add to what I've already put.
All right. Councillor Kelly?
Uh, yes, I will give a report. I have avowed myself of a lot of training that was offered to new councillors and councillors over the last month. I will log these into the green form. But as for now, on the 22nd of February, I went to a Sustainable Living in the Malle meeting. On the 24th of February, I went to the MAV training at the St Kilda Town Hall with the MAV, where Kate Oliver, a partner at Maddox in public law, presented on chairing a meeting, which I know that our CEO has distributed that PowerPoint that she did to councillors. It was a really excellent session, attended by about 25 other councils and mayors from around Victoria. And I do plan to bring some of that information also back to the council with everyone else. So we did the council draft budget on the 28th. And then on the first of, uh, the first of, of March, I attended the funeral of Dr Carol Major, which I'd like to just say a few words about in that Carol was a doctor here for many years. A hardworking GP who gave great service to the community. And condolences to his family. It was, he certainly hearing his story was a, a great Swan Hill story about a man who gave great service and impacted this community greatly. I'm very sad to hear of his, his death. On the 3rd of March, I did a Zoom Women in Conservation breakfast. On the 8th of 3rd was International Women's Day. 9th of the 3rd, I did an MAV induction for new councillors. And that was a great day, forgetting who chaired it, but it was from 9:30 till 3:00 at the MAV in Docklands. They're just about to move offices to Nicholson Street, but this was in Docklands. And the president of the MAV, Kerry Thompson, spoke and several other speakers. It was, it was just excellent. And then on the 16th of March, I did some training in media from 8:30 till 5:00 at, in Docklands again. And that was brilliant. And I definitely will put on one of the assembly's agenda just to give some, some of the things I learned to my fellow councillors to bring that information back to benefit our, our council. And yeah, it's been a busy month. Thank you.
Councillor Kay?
I attended the Boundary Bend. I've submitted mine online for the first time, so hold on me for, you know, for that skill and awareness. The Boundary Bend Progress Association meeting and a couple of other events. They can't quite come to mind at the moment. But what I would like to mention is that I attended Rock Quiz at the park. And congratulations to Simon Myers and the rest of the council team. It was an incredible success.
Thank you. Councillor Young?
I haven't done one. Be on there by tomorrow.
All right. Councillor Jeffrey? Councillor Moore?
Uh, yeah, fairly quite much again. The Swan Hill District Health Smaking Ceremony for the, for new building there was really a great, a well-attended event, that was. 23rd, the second, 78th Board Meeting, 24th, the second, Lake Boga Alliance Club Art Exhibition. First, 3rd, Swan Hill Bridge Committee Discussion along with councillor Mayor Mcfee. Sixth, the third, Ambro Business Advisory Committee and the 40th Livestock Exchange Advisory Committee. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you councillor Moore. Yeah, my events are going to be in the minutes. Number of events I went to, but just like to highlight the successful long weekend we had with our food and wine festival, now splashing the Lake Boga and obviously Rock Quiz was all tied up in that. And also we got a lot of publicity from Sunday night with Paul Murray Live. It was great to see that Swan Hill was highlighted in the, across Australia. And I'm sure we'll get a lot of good response from that. And please, haven't happened yet, just remind people about our consultation sessions coming up this Thursday for the two buildings at the art gallery and the cultural hub. And also this Saturday, Harmony Day from 4 to 8 at Riverside Park, a great event to attend. I've always said you can tour the world on your stomach with a cuisine down there. It's great to see. So certainly have to see many people there. That being it, we shall call it stunts and call the meeting closed. You can just remain seated till the live stream stops. Thank you, councillors.